You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. We'll call this meeting the Special Meeting of the Branford Planning, Zoning Commission to Order. It is Thursday, July 27th, 2023. I have 7:01 PM. We'll start by introducing members of the commission and staff. Joe Chadwick, commission member. Joe, are you here?
Joe Chadwick is present.
Thank you, Joe. Fred Russo, commission member. Fred, are you here? Fred, you're muted, I believe, or?
Okay, Fred Russo, present.
Thanks, Fred. And by the way, thanks so much for taking over last time.
Not a problem.
Great, so. Commission Member Joe Vayuzo, Joe, are you here?
Joe Vayuzo, here.
Commission Member Marcy Paluzzi. Marcy, are you here?
Marcy Paluzzi is here.
Thank you, Marcy. Massimo Legore. Massimo, are you here?
Massimo Legore is here.
Thank you, Massimo. And is Sharon Hutner here? We don't see Sharon.
I do not, and I frankly can't remember whether she said she might not be here tonight.
Okay. And I'm Chuck Andrews Chair. Our staff this evening is our Town Planner, Harry Smith. Harry, you're here?
I am here.
Our Assistant Planner, Evan Bryning. Evan, you're here?
Here.
And our Clerk Recording Secretary lurking out there is Michelle Martin. I'll ask our secretary to read the notice of public hearing. Fred, can you do that?
Yes. Legal Notice, Town of Branford. The Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Branford, Connecticut, everybody gets notice of public hearings to be held on Thursday, July 7th, 2023 at 7:00 PM by remote technology. Consider the applications listed below. Information regarding how to participate in the public hearings will be provided on the commission's meeting agenda. They'll be posted on the town's website at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. Number one, application number 23-6.6, special exception for indoor recreation located at 67 North Branford Road, Thomas Briggs, APK, and owner. At said hearings, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies are on file in the Planning and Zoning Commission's office at the Planning and Zoning Department, 1019 Main Street, Branford, Connecticut, 06405. Written communications may be sent to the above address or to planningzoning@branfordcht.gov. Branford Planning and Zoning Commission, Seandres Chairperson.
Chuck Andrews Chair, thank you, Fred. We'll follow a normal format for public hearings, which is the applicant goes first, makes its presentation, including any of its consultants. After the applicant is done, we turn it over to the commissions and staff. We typically hear a staff report, open it up for question comments by commissions. At that point, we open up for public comment. And I'm going to ask Evan to review the process for that. But basically, you'll make yourself known. We'll ask you to identify your name and address for the record, and then make your public comments. At some point, when we're done with the public portion, we turn it back, allow the APK to respond to the public questions or comments if they desire, and follow up with any further questions and comments by commission members. We may or may not close a public hearing, depending on how it goes. With that, Evan, can you go through the process for the public to participate in public hearings?
Sure. So if during a public hearing, you'd like to ask a question or make any comments, down at the bottom of your screen, there is a reactions button. You can select that. You can press raise hand to indicate that you'd like to speak or ask any questions. You can also type into the chat that you'd like to speak. And if not, wave your hand in front of the camera. I'll try to catch you. If you're dialing in by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. And we ask that everybody please state their name, the beginning of their comment or question.
Chuck Andrews Chair, thank you, Evan. With that, we'll turn to our agenda items. The first item is a continued public hearing. It's Joseph Tomorrow, 245 East Main Street, Special Exception Modification. This is a matter I think we opened on May 18th. We continued to have further discussion at our last meeting on July 20th, and we continued that. Is the applicant ready to proceed with any additional comments?
Yes. Good evening, Chuck, and fellow commissioners. Jim Preddy, Preschool Engineering, 420 East Main Street, here in Branford. We did go over this at the last meeting. There were some revised drawings that were submitted at the beginning of the week, that week, and we were given Harry time to write up the proposed conditions and findings, that sort of thing, and amend the staff report. I will say that the last meeting was a little bit surprising. There was one commissioner that was very voiceful in the view of the aesthetics of the building. I think the word ugly was used at some point. I have to go back and look, but I don't know if anybody's been by there recently. I'm going to just show you. So this is what the building currently looks like. I personally don't think it's ugly. I think it's a good-looking building compared to the other buildings in that stretch of road. This is what the architecture looks like in that stretch of road. So I'm not sure what we're comparing it to. Maybe this. I don't know. So I think that's, you know, an opinion of aesthetics. I don't know how much that really weighs on zoning issues. The other thing I guess I'll point out is... Where is it? Where's the trunks? I'm not showing them. Here it is. So this was the original plan that had been approved back in, I think, 2018 or 19. The architect at the time had promoted this series of steps and ramps and things, and planters with this big stone face thing kind of going along here. But I will say that the notes that are on the drawings that were approved, you know, hardy plank to be determined, styled windows to be determined, painted panels to be determined. These drawings say not for construction. 99% of the time that the drawings that get approved at the land use level aren't the construction documents. Nobody usually spends that money until they're ready for a building permit. So things do get modified. So I will say the footprint hasn't changed, the massing hasn't changed, the height hasn't changed, the number of units hasn't changed. Some of the architectural treatments have changed. This is the drawing that the second architect had presented for a building permit. Still some different materials, some black siding, still some EFS. A lot of the same elements were there, but you know, this was the final design. We did incorporate Harry's comments into everything that we've addressed. We did add the little piece of sidewalk on this side that originally wasn't part of the approval. We did, we went over that, the sidewalk to the viewing bench that we went back and forth with DOT and finally worked that out. So that's back in the project. The lighting, I believe, has been now hammered out between staff and the electrician. There are, you know, some of the other, there were terraces here originally, and we are putting patios back. I was actually on the site today with Mr. Tomorrow, and we discussed the possibility of putting, you know, if that's something we can add at this point, low sitting walls around this with some stone facing, to give some of that stone element back. But the truth of the matter is that this whole hill area that, you know, we're using to hide the lowest level of the, and that was always part of the plan, but hide the lowest level of the building where the garage is. We have extensive plantings going on here. Once they start growing up, you're really not going to see much of any of this patio area or the sidewalk or any of it. And Harry, I don't know if you picked up on it, by the way, but this was the connecting sidewalk.
Yep.
Right along the edge here. So I guess with that, those are just my additional comments from the last meeting.
Chuck Andrews Chair, thank you, Mr. Preddy. Anything else from your side that you want to present at this time?
I don't know if Joe has anything he wants to add right now.
Okay. Okay, we're sure, I know the location's a fairly prominent location. The building's fairly visible, and I'm sure maybe commission members will have some follow-up questions regarding the exterior changes with that. With that, Harry, do you want to review your supplemental staff report?
Sure. Harry Smith, Town Planner. I'll just share my screen here and run through the report. I appreciate getting the extra time. Unfortunately, I did not really get this out to the commission members until late last night. And received, you know, just a small change this morning, but it did require me to go back and tweak some of the wording about the lighting. Just the only change was the particular piece of light fixture that's going to be attached to the wall, just to sub out one for another one. So I'll just go down and as we go through here, so that's the blue of the changes I made today to this. I think I'll just summarize quickly maybe, and if we need to get into the text of the report, we can get into that. I did provide, hopefully, Jim, you got a copy of that?
I did, it's off.
Great, okay. And just to clarify, I believe you said the last meeting that the landscaping is native by things?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay, great. Because I did not look at all the different species and didn't bother putting addition in just based on that, so.
When I gave Larry Appleton the list that he was using, and he said he used only plants that were on that list.
Perfect. All right, thank you. So the only reason really for the adjustment of landscaping was to address the change in that retaining wall in the slope coming down from the front door of the building facing East Main Street. So that looked fine to me, the lights, as mentioned. We've now worked that out, the pole lights in the parking lot. My final understanding, based on a couple of back and forth emails with you, Jim, is that the 2019 fixtures are the ones that are going forward, and they're actually, I think, in the basement of the building now. I'll just sort of state again that I don't know why the electrician has not submitted the actual specification to the building department, but that's the only step that needs to be taken. So for some reason, he hasn't done that. I think he sent an email saying it was his intention to swap it back. They just need the actual spec sheet, because the other one is what's on file with him now.
Yeah, the picture I sent you is actually the actual fixture mounted on the pole laying.
No, I appreciate that, but they need the spec sheet.
Yeah.
So, and you know, we can get in touch with him ourselves. It's not your job, in my opinion, to do that, but there you are. So you mentioned the pathway in the sidewalk that was great, coastal viewing area. I think at the last meeting, I, and I'll just put the site plan up for a minute. See if I can swap that out. So is everyone seeing the site plan instead of the staff report now? Great. I'll try and blow this up a little bit. And I had some pictures before. This frag mighty right under my cursor here, from the pictures I went and took last week. So with the bench up here, now the original plan had it somewhere over here, let's say. But given the fact that this is the plan the DOT is agreeing to in their easement area, I propose that, and my understanding is DEP will allow the removal of frag mighties. This actually was out with one of their environmental analysts, actually, in the, from the permitting side, enforcement side, Kevin Savoy. And another project, another site, we did talk about removing frag mighties from tidal wetlands on that site. So my understanding is they can be removed, and I'm proposing a condition that they be removed and be maintained. That area would be maintained to keep them out, to require some periodic, you know, pulling of them. But just to maintain a view, because otherwise, as they grow up, there's really, I don't think there's too much of a view there. And you got a fence that's going to be affirmed to this bench too, so.
So Harry and I, Harry, Joe and I met on site there today. Jim Preddy again. There are, it is frag up to almost where it says WF2, and then it starts to get woody. You know, there's some trees and stuff.
Yeah, we're talking about this area and not down here.
No, absolutely. So we talked a lot, and he agreed that, you know, he could get those pulled out in that area.
That'd be great, because I think that makes it kind of workable. It's not certainly ideal, but I think, you know, given the fact that's what was approved in 2019, this follows along with that, and you know, it's the compromise worked out with DOT. So let's go back to... It's staff report. I'm going to pull out again the elevation, so. This is the new one, believe this, there it is. So this is the existing one that was just shown to you, and Jim went over the differences. You know, the wind, I will emphasize that, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, the window alignment and openings are all constructed per this plan, not per this plan. So is that right?
That's correct.
So the constructions jumped ahead, assuming that would be approved, basically.
Well, there was a couple of other things. Part of this, Jim Preddy again, the construction of the building became modular. So some of that had to change because of the way that the framing had to work to bring these units together and things, so.
Okay. I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, there's differences.
I will say there is a whole section in the zoning regulations called Townwide Design Considerations, Section 6.14, one of the basic standard sections. They're... They don't have precise requirements. You know, there are a list of guidelines, 614D. So it's two pages. I'm not going to read them all, but I assume commissioners all have them. But I also point out one of the special exception criteria, Section 9.8F3, which says the following. "Design elements of the proposed development must be attractive and suitable in relation to the site characteristics, the style of other buildings, the media area, and existing and probable future character of the neighborhood in which the use is to be located." I'm not offering an opinion either way as staff. I don't really feel qualified. I'm not a design professional. I just wanted to point out those are the relevant sections of the zoning regulations commissioners should be looking at if they're considering the elevation changes or what they may want to decide about them. So with that, I'll just quickly go back to the staff report, and just, I may not highlight this right now. One off there, sorry. But just to point out, this is, public hearing would have to close tonight. The 100-day maximum extent of the public hearing will end sometime in August. So we have to close the hearing tonight, because there will not be another meeting until September. You do have 65 days after the close of public hearing. Hardly ever take that amount of time, but I just want to point that out to you legally, to have that time. And at the end of the staff report, I have provided proposed findings and conditions, given the comments at the last meeting. I just wanted to be prepared and did propose, first set, assuming the commission's going to propose, approve the elevation changes and the removal of the retaining wall, and the adjustment in the walkway of the parking lot, et cetera, in the grading. This is blue, isn't based on the new light design that came in, this is different fixture, so I just refer to that, that that's what's approved. This is not on, the site plan itself from a week ago contradicts that, so wanted to sync those up in the record here. And I have this condition here, the frag mighties locate along the bank, but will be removed, ongoing maintenance undertaken prevent a significant reprieve of them or other vegetation land with the coastal jurisdiction line, which is your area of jurisdiction. Then when the pinion zoning officer impede the views. That's the other vegetation. I think you can go in, do any, the removal of the frag mighties can be, I mean, that can be done, I think, below the coastal jurisdiction line, based on what I understand. And then just saying that would be, that would be continued, that maintenance satisfaction, zoning enforcement area, officer, excuse me. And these are standard conditions that just weren't on the original approval. Sure, clients with zoning regulations, maintaining the landscaping in general, all the landscaping proposed on site, maintaining other improvements, standard lighting condition for any additional lights, meet these requirements that are in regs. You need to come back for approval for any additional replacement lighting prior to a CO, completion of all site work, or a bond. And then just modifying that sheet that has the old fixture on the walls as built. And again, proposing a financial guarantee to ensure survival of plant materials. We have had some issues with other developments, and particularly this time of year, if plants go in, it's pretty tough the end of the summer. And we did have a lot, a few that needed to be replaced, and a couple of other developments. And then all our conditions, I mean, full force may still apply. I did also provide an alternative set of findings and conditions should the commission choose to not approve the modifications to the building exterior based on the comments last week. So this is just here for that purpose, is basically the same set of findings and conditions, just adjusted so that not only with the elevation changes, but the landscaping changes wouldn't be needed at that point, and the grading changes wouldn't be needed either that are on plants. So I'm going to stop there, stop sharing, and we can go back to all that. Handle any questions, Christian, may I have?
Chuck Andrews Chair, thank you, Harry. Just for the record, I will note, I was not here at the last meeting, but I did listen to or watch the video of the meeting, so. With that, let's open up for questions, comments from commission members. Do any members of the commission have questions or comments?
Chuck, Fred Russo?
Fred.
I'm good with the retaining wall coming down and then landscaping the mound. I think the wall, the existing wall in the original plan, makes it even more stark about the height of the building. This is one more thing. I think with landscaping, we'll soften up the front of the building. So that's, I would think, my opinion.
Great. Chuck Andrews Chair, thank you, Fred. Other members of the commission have questions or comments?
Yes, can you hear me? Marcy.
Marcy.
I'm coming back on. Yeah, I don't have any objections to the building itself. You know, I'm a bit remiss, because all I remember seeing for the landscape plan was the elevation. And as I drive by there, the only thing I find awkward is the steepness of the slope. And so I would love to see some stepped retaining walls, perhaps really to the sides coming in perpendicular to the building to try to extend the upper plinth out under that window line. I think that that would go a long way, but it may be too late. And I certainly trust Larry Appleton's judgment. I just have not had an opportunity to review his plan. I'm not, I never got it, and I just haven't seen it. So that's my comment.
Chuck Andrews Chair, thank you, Marcy. Other comments, questions from commission members? Hearing none? Do we, does he, you've got a couple of comments, Mr. Preddy. Do you want to respond? Marcy made a few comments there, and I think we heard from Fred. Any immediate responses you'd like to make at this time before we open up to the public?
Only that, you know, the grading in the front isn't done, and there's kind of some, some of the mass earthwork got placed there. It will be, it is in some spots steep. I agree with Marcy, but it will be softened up, and it'll meet, you know, all the three-to-one regulations, the way we've laid it out. Again, there are grade, there's a grade, a sidewalk with grade steps that works its way up to that front door. But yeah, like, and I think Fred and Marcy were both alluding to that, that the landscaping will certainly soften up the front of that building. That was the whole point of the mound to begin with, kind of hide part of it. And once the landscaping is established and starts to grow, you won't see much of any of the sidewalk even, or the patios, so.
Chuck Andrews Chair, thank you, Mr. Preddy. Any other comments from commission members before we open up to the public? Hearing none, then let's open up to the public for public comment. Does any member of the public wish to comment? Evan, do you see anyone?
No, but I'd like to reiterate, down at the bottom of your screen, there's a reactions button. You can select from there to raise your hand, or you can indicate in the chat that you'd like to speak. I do not see any member of the public that would like to speak.
Chuck Andrews Chair, thank you, Evan. Okay, any further comments by commission members and staff? Any further comments from Mr. Preddy or the APK?
I don't think I have any. Joe, do you have any that you want to add? Joe Tomorrow?
Yeah, I mean, I have no doubts in my mind. It's going to be the most beautiful building on that street, and you know, whatever the little landscaping, it's going to look, the building's going to look great, so. And like I said, those plans were done back in 2019, and that was just a rendering what was going to happen. You know, but when you go into, when you go into planning, things change, so. You know, site conditions change, and the architect that designed this building, Douglas Cutler, he's well-known. He's done beautiful buildings all through Greenwich and very expensive areas, and when he saw those walls in the front, he knew that those walls were going to make that building look ugly. So that's why those were taken out. It was going to lower the level. You were going to see more of the foundation. It wasn't going to, the building's not going to look great. By putting that berm in front of that building, it's going to blend that building right into the landscape. It's not going to look so out of the sky. It's not going to get, if you lower that elevation in the front, you're going to make that building look so hot. It's not going to look good. You have to put different.
Chuck Andrews Chair, thank you, Mr. Tomorrow. Are you finished? I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Preddy?
That's it.
Any other questions, comments from commission members or staff? Okay, then we will close this matter as a public hearing, and this is something we can discuss later on, but see where we are. So thank you very much. I bring you to item number two on our agenda, which is Anthony Capasso, applicant, Walter McGuire Jr., owner. This is 667682 Totoket Road and Zero Tweed Road in Pine Orchard, the re-subdivision to create four new lots from the three existing properties located at 6667 to 82 Totoket Road and Zero Tweed Road, and the coastal cycling. We had opened this matter and had a public hearing, I think, at our, in our June meeting, June 15th, also our July 20th meeting, and there was, there were some... There were some additional comments that the applicant, I believe, uh, wanted to provide in response to staff and. Uh, comments, and I know there was other comments from a, a butter and engineer hired by the butters. And my understanding is that the, uh. Applicant has requested an additional extension and requested that we continue this to our September seventh meeting. And we'll provide the information before our next meeting. Is that correct, Harry?
Uh, that is my understanding.
Is the applicant here?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So, um, so for this matter, then, um, that's, uh, that's item number two. That's the, uh, Totoka road one. This will be continued to our next meeting, which is on September seventh. So, um. Tune in. Yeah, Harry?
And I believe mentioned that the time extension was offered to allow that continuance by the applicant.
Okay, yes, correct. Uh. The time, the applicant has consented to that, has granted permission to continue the public hearing. So this matter will be continued again to our Zoom meeting on September seventh. So that then brings us then to, uh, item number three. Which is Thomas Briggs, applicant owner at sixty-seven North Branford Road. This is a special exception for indoor recreation. Is the applicant here on that one?
Uh, Harry, could you make, uh, Kevin Somers, Carl Nelson, uh, and Lisa P. co-hosts, please?
I will. So everyone should be co-host now that Evan mentioned.
Is, I, I just noticed there is a raised hand or is that gone? Seems to be gone.
I think that was Lisa P. Oh, no, it wasn't. It was Kevin Summers. I think so. That was about. Trying to get permission to talk, I believe.
Okay, great. So we're, we're taking care of that.
Yeah. So I don't know who wants to start, but, um.
Uh, Carl, Kevin?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, Kevin Summers on behalf of Tom Briggs, the owner for sixty-seven North Branford Road. Um, we are basically applying to move in tenant Lisa. From Lisa's bootcamp, who has been in town for quite a few years now. And she looking to move into our building. Um, she has strict time constraints. She needs to be out of her place by September first, I believe. And we are just granting a, or trying to get the special exception approved.
Chuck, thank you. Any additional comments before we turn it over to the staff?
Not right now. Oh, happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Um, at this point, we'll turn it over to Evan for our staff report. Evan, do you want to review the staff report with us?
Uh, yeah, sure. I'd like to start by sharing my screen. Um, and just showing everyone where this property is. So here is exit fifty-five. Uh, here's East Main Street. And I've highlighted the property here just after the turn on to North Branford Road. Uh, the applicant today is seeking a special exception for a change of use to indoor recreation. Um, like Mr. Somer said for us, uh, Lisa, uh, Peters, uh, Lisa Peterson is, um. Received a special exception from this commission in twenty eighteen. She currently runs Lisa's Bike and Bootcamp Studio, uh, at ten Sylvia Street. Um, she is, uh, looking to move into this, uh, this building, um, in the front of this, um. This business development on North Branford Road. Um. They have requested waiver of the survey requirement. Uh, however, they did give us, um, some diagrams of both the interior units. Along with some parking calculations, uh, unit one is where they are proposing to, um, have this, uh, fitness studio. Um, along with, uh, an older survey. Um, the applicant has, uh. Um, contracted a surveyor, uh, to start work on a site plan for them. Uh, over the past few months, it's come to the attention of the planning zoning department that there was a number of tenants in here that did not. Uh, receive, uh, use approvals. Um, however, uh, this current owner who's recently bought the property. Uh, has, uh, shown that he's dedicated to work with staff. Um, he's already contracted that surveyor, like I mentioned before. Um, and so over the next, uh, few weeks, or maybe even months, we'll be ironing out some of the details with them to clean up. Uh, and eventually have all these uses approved on the site, uh, all that, all the uses that need approval at this site at least. So staff was hoping that the commission would, um, waive this survey requirement for this particular application as they're not proposing any site plan changes. The rest of my review was, uh, mainly focused on the proposed parking. Um, I'll pull up the table. Uh, and. The issue here is that, uh, the collective uses at the site, when we included, uh, the indoor recreation use. Came to a grand total of forty-one spaces that would be required. Uh, the, this site has exactly forty-one spaces. Uh, but it also has three vacant tenants. Um, so. Again, staff will be working with the property owner, um, to, to explore different avenues that they can go down in order to. Uh, meet these parking requirements. We've also made a finding, uh, a part of this, um, approval. Uh, that would say that the commission notes that based on the information available at this time and the known uses on the property, this approval, this. This approval uses, uses the last available parking on the property absent of a reduction in the parking requirements or a modification of the site plan or uses on the site. No landscaping plans, uh, submitted and no lighting either. Um, no earth disturbance and no site plan changes are part of this application. And based on the application materials appears that the special exception criteria are generally satisfied. Uh, staff recommends the following findings, the one I had already mentioned about, uh, the, uh, entire parking requirement already, um, being met. First condition is that the applicant, uh, meets the special exception criteria. Uh, the second is that this, this approval exclusively applies to the establishment of a two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five square foot indoor recreational use. And unit one at the property currently known as sixty-seven North Branford Road. As depicted on sheet A E one entitled existing layout drawing dated August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, no changes to the site plan are part of this approval and no other existing or proposed uses are to be interpreted as approved at this site. Uh, and then we included the condition that would require compliance with section six point seven for any proposed lighting.
Thank you, Evan. Uh, is that it for you, uh, at this time?
That is it.
Okay. Questions, comments from commission members before we open up to the public? Hearing none, let's open it up to the public. Any member of the public wish to comment?
Wait a minute, Chuck, it's Marcy.
Uh, Marcy, please go ahead.
I just want to make mention that this hasn't come up, but it, I believe it's off the same street in the same area where. There was another CrossFit building in the same zone. Um, so I don't think that this is a new type of application for the area. So that being said, and, and my understanding with the parking, I, I know we haven't had the discussion yet. But it seems to me that the hours of operation would affect the, the, uh, activity in the parking lot where. I think most of the classes would probably be early in the morning and late in the evening. So if those things are. Accurate, I think that's an, an important consideration relative to the parking discussion.
Chuck, thank you, Marcy. Any other comments from, uh, any commission members or staff before we open up to the public? Hearing none, let's go ahead and open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to comment? Evan, you see anyone? Looks like, uh, Mr. Mareska.
Go ahead, Barry.
Um, I just want to say, um, it, assuming that the, the building. Is, uh, is correctly suited for something like this, um, we certainly want to encourage any Branford business. To stay in Branford and expand in Branford as opposed to going elsewhere. So if this, uh, facility can outfit such a, um, uh. A company, then yes, I think it definitely is a wise thing, uh, and we can do whatever we can to help them. And I'll reach out my hand if there's anything that I can do to help them as they go through this process. Thank you.
Chuck, thank you, Mr. Mareska. Any other members of the public wish to comment? Evan, you see anybody?
I do not see anyone.
Um, okay, we can close the public portion then. Are there any further comments from commission members or staff? Any further comments from the applicant?
Um, I would just like to point out that as we, we actually have already started the survey. On site and as we're going through investigating things, I think we actually have more parking spaces. For ourselves than what is currently shown on the parking table. Um, so we do have beyond forty-one parking spaces and. I think that's about it. Hopefully we can move forward and have Lisa moved in pretty quickly.
Uh, Chuck, thank you, Mr. Summers. Anything else from anyone? Applicant, commission members or staff? Hearing none, then I think we can close this matter as a public hearing. This is something we'll, uh, can discuss in a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Summers. Um, okay, then we have no minutes to approve. Uh, so let's go back to our public hearing items. Uh, the first one was the, uh, Mr. Tomorrow, two forty-five East Main Street. I know, um. So this is a revision. We had some, uh, um. There were some discussions about this, the, the main, there are a number of changes to the grading plan. To the coastal access and to the exterior of the building. When I listened to the last meeting, um, I know that, uh, Joe Chadwick, you made the, uh. Made the comment about, uh, possible bait and switch, which I think is a very fair comment. I don't know if it necessarily applies here, but, but obviously you want to prove something with the expectation that they come in with something else that doesn't. Match up to that. So I think the question is, does this proposal, the changes? You know, are, are, are we okay with the changes? And, um. And, and, and on the exterior of the building, I wasn't. I mean, that, that's not my field, but, but I, I mean, it was, I, I didn't see that much of a difference, but, uh, you know, uh. So I don't know. What, what, what do other people think?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I get your check from it? So the five regular members sitting on this, I know, um, Mazemo. But as he could, as an alternate member, was talking during the public hearing portion, but now that it's deliberations, I just wanted to clarify.
That's, uh, Chuck, thank you, Harry. That's a good point. I did, um, I, I did view the, the tape, uh, as, as I mentioned, so I assume that I probably should. Should vote. I appreciate Mazemo. Thank you for, for any, you can always participate. Thank you so much. Uh, you know, uh, so, uh.
So at this point, it's the five regular members.
The five regular members, the discussion should be limited to the five regulars. So.
Thank you.
So, uh, any questions, comments? Joe Chadwick, any, anything, thoughts one way or the other?
My, my feeling is it's, it's so far down the road, um. There's nothing we can really do to, you know, sort of fix it or get it back. Um. The proportions are ungainly, the lack of any meaningful way to get the building mass to reconcile with grade. Is kind of distressing. Um, plants are always an option. I mean, there's, there's the famous Frank Lloyd Wright soliloquy or Sobriquet about. Doctors burying their mistakes and architects advising their clients to plant ivy. So, um. You know, it's, it's, I, I, I don't know what the extenuating circumstances were to have caused this. And I certainly don't want to make them worse. But in the future, I, I hope we're more diligent, or at least have some capacity to be more diligent in the, um. Different differences between what is proposed and what ends up in the building department as, as being constructed.
Chuck, thanks, Joe. Uh, Fred, any comments?
Well, but, uh, you know, I, I'm listening to what Joe said. I think it's a valid point about this, you know, uh, switch in, in, in. In the middle of the stream there, but I, I, I'm thinking that if, if it was a switch and it's better than what was originally proposed. Then I'm not against it. I mean, I, I, I'm, I agree with Joe, what he's saying. We're going to be careful not to. Accept one thing and then all of a sudden, and, you know, down the line, it gets changed. But I think in this particular case, we're not talking about anything else. I think removing that, that wall and doing some good landscaping is a better plan than what was originally proposed. So. Um, and once I agree with Joe, but in this particular case, uh, I think that landscaping would do wonders for that. Spot without having, um, another massive wall in front of the building. So I, I, I'm good with the way it's being proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Thanks, Fred. Joe Vayuzo, any thoughts or comments?
Well, based on what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing, uh. Removing that wall, it will be an improvement in landscaping, uh, if it's landscaped properly, it would. Probably be better in the long run, but, uh, there are situations there that. Been taken care of long before the building was even, uh. With, with what we got now. So I think movement of, as I said, seeing another wall would, would. Better, I think sloping it with the way they, they got the high slope and adding some, uh, some. Good landscaping, uh, tech will, uh, make a big difference. Uh, I've stuck to, to, uh, do the best we can with what's there now. So. I'm, I'm, I agree with the wall being removed. It'd be an improvement.
Chuck, thanks, Joe. Marcy, thoughts, comments?
Oh, yeah. Um, you know, I'm not qualified to address the look of the architecture, but what I would. Say about the architecture is it's clearly a different, more modern style than what we're used to, and that doesn't make it bad. Um, I can't really speak well to what makes good modern architecture. I know Joe could, but. What I can speak to is the way it, it rests on the land and, you know. We all knew what it went in, that we were putting the parking under to, which is, I think, a good thing, and it's not the height that bothers me. What bothers me is oftentimes the architecture stops. At the building and doesn't extend into the ground. And we've got this kind of vertical change. You know, it really would have been appropriate midway to have a, you know, a good three-foot wall or something to start to bring. The line and style of the architecture down into the landscape. I'm not saying to. Have the wall that they did, because I think what was proposed was almost have a seat wall up top and it kind of a. It, it affected your view from the street because it is elevated, but to. Try to break up that three to one slope with the vertical element to extend the building. You know, here's a case where as much as I agree about native plantings, you know, native plantings tend to be not very. Um, compact and structured and, you know, with the modern. Look of a, of a building. I think here's a case where you might want to have a cleaner hedge or something that's. Non-native to extend the architecture to help mitigate that. Slope in front, you know, I mean, I know Larry is a good designer, but he was basically given a palette of. Native plants to work with. And my sense is that he's probably taking a more residential approach to the. The configuration of the plants, which. You know, personally, I think might not agree with the style of the architecture. So. You know, when we, and this is probably a little bit offbeat to this discussion, but. You know, we get into trying to regulate the landscape, right? And get all concise about use this many plants and that many plants and this many percent native. This is exactly the scenario where you need to have the design professional to give them some latitude to work with. The materials in a way that's going to work with the architecture and that way, you know, with the architectural materials. And to combine the two. You know, and I think, you know, it's not fair to tie Larry's hands by making everything in that foundation be. Necessarily native if he wanted to take a more structured approach to how he positioned the plants, you know. But to the native argument, you know, all that area and the relationship down to the wetlands. Yeah, that, that edge should have a strong native. You know, component and be continued. And therein lies the landscape, um, struggle. As far as this particular site plan works, but you know. We are far, far down the road. I don't think, you know, I would like to see. you know, I would like to see some landscape moves adjusted and proposed, but, you know, I think the building is what it is. I think it's, you know, okay, relative to everything that's on the street, you know, it doesn't offend me in any way, it doesn't offend me, but I think we just time to time and time, don't go far enough with extending the structure of the building beyond the face of the building where there's a lot of gray change, and it's like, oh, let's just do a three-to-one slope and throw plants on it. And to me, that's the disservice in the, in this particular case. So if we can avoid that in the future, I would, I would hope to see that.
Chuck Anderson, thank, thank you, Marcy. Marcy, it sounds like you're, you know, thinking of future applications. Is it fair to say that for this one, I know that on the one hand, you didn't want to second guess, but Larry Appleton, but, but he was constrained. Do you, do you want to tweak any of the conditions, would you suggest, or, or just?
I would like to see the conditions tweaked to propose a, you know, a retaining wall midway on the slope and to allow Larry the opportunity to adjust the plantings as he sees fit with, not, you know, not being confined by the native discussion. You know, I, I don't disagree with the need for native, but, you know, when you, you know, it's like saying, okay, you can never do brick buildings again because they're not native, right? Or a certain material because it's not native and, you know, because it's not a natural material and that, that, you know, confines his creativity. So I mean, I don't know if there's a way to do that at this late hour. That's why I, I pushed it, you know, the discussion a little bit to the future, but you know, if, if he could make some adjustments, I, I think, you know, certainly getting street trees in there is going to do well and, you know, getting that grade adjusted. But, you know, I think just a three-foot wall midway up the slope or a certain dimension up the slope to hold back some of that grade to allow the slopes to change or just to take that dynamic out could go a very long way, you know, in, in the way the plan sits on the, on the ground. And that's, you know, I'm just offering my expertise for that reason.
Can I throw something in here, Mr. Chairman, just quickly? You know, as been stated by several people, this is pretty far down the line, and I don't know what exact plans the building department had and how that went through zoning. We have, of course, staff changes at the ZO level. Beyond that, I'm a little leery. I wish it had been brought up during the public hearings. The applicant responded to some of this, which I think is great discussion about adjusting that landscape slope and making it a more, providing some flexibility and how that's designed and trying to break it up a little, maybe is the easiest thing to categorize it as. How to do that now? Because at this point, if we put in something in the conditions that sort of makes the applicant do it, or we could rely on them to possibly come back, and they could do this through staff, if Chris is comfortable with it, to do exactly what Marcy's suggesting. Depending on what, you know, their landscape architect wants to exactly propose. You know, I can discuss that with the applicant, what that process would be, which, I mean, I don't know what that timeframe is to get this building finally completed. I know it's been under construction for quite a while, and I'm sure there are financial, you know, considerations at work here. So I'll just throw that out, and whether you really want to tweak the conditions to make it happen, or rely on the minor site plan amendment process if the applicant wants to go ahead and make those modifications or something along those lines. I'm going to just suggest that's a way to do it, I guess.
Yeah, Chuck Anderson, thanks, Harry. I, I mean, I heard there are sort of two components from what I understood from Marcy said. One was the tweaking to allow possibly some non-native parts of the plantings, which I think we could throw that in the condition. The second was adding a retaining wall. That seems to be sort of different, that, that, because I thought one, one of the things is they're taking out the retaining walls, but then possibly part coming back.
Yeah, I mean, that would require redesigning the grading, of course, and all of that, and, you know, some more work from Jim Preddy, and frankly, so it might be, at this point, you know, financial consideration for the owner to go through that kind of redesign.
If I may interject, Marcy's comment about the hedges providing a horizontal element to help land the building and bring it down, I think that was like brilliant. And that really needs, needs some further consideration. I mean, it's, it's much less expensive than building walls, which would be more textural, but it's, it's, it's part of a plant vocabulary, and I, I think that's, that's probably one of the smartest things I've heard in a long time.
Well, it's something like that. I think we could. Couldn't we put that in a condition somewhere?
I can try to work something together here, yes. I might suggest that there's only the one other item, which is not a public hearing, a public input item under new business. I don't know whether you want to do that and come back to this while I try to.
Sure, yeah, yeah. So I think what we're doing, you had in your staff recommendation, you had two possible motions. I think we're leaning with the first one. And then we're talking about tweaking with the landscaping to, for, for the hedge component. I guess those are non-native. To, to allow that. And if you want to tweak with that, we can go on and we can go, because Evan dealt with the second, the other public hearing item, which we would need to discuss. So maybe we can run to. Okay, so we'll, we'll let Harry work on that. And let's move then to the item number three of the public hearings, which was Mr. Briggs, sixty-seven North Branford Road, the special exception for indoor recreation. Evan, do you want to pull up the staff report on that one?
Sure. Can you guys see staff report? Or the findings and conditions?
Right, yeah. And, and again, to understand this was a change of, oh, first, I think, the first, well, a couple of things. We, this, this is a change of use, no site plan. There are some additional parking issues, but this one's okay. You're, had discussions with the owner and they're hiring in the, and the applicant represented that they've hired a surveyor, they think there's more parking spaces. So there'll be additional stuff that's gone on to, to, to make the site work. And I understand there may have been an illegal division of the property as well, but anyway, you'll, you'll be working on that. This one looks okay. It does comply with the regulations, so we would be good for approving this one. Anyway, that was my sort of takeaway from that. I know we do need to make a motion to waive the, the survey for this, and we can do that, but that was my takeaway. Anyone else have any thoughts or comments before we get into motions?
This seems like the most pro forma of applications. I mean, there's, it's, any, any time we spend talking about it's going to be too much. I mean, this is just, you know, something we need to do.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Anything, anyone else? Okay, hearing none. First one would be a motion to waive the survey requirement for this application. Someone want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, Marcy.
Marcy makes a motion to waive the survey. Is there a second?
Fred Russo, seconds.
Second by Fred. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick is in favor.
Fred?
Fred's in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And Chair is also in favor of waiving the survey. That brings us then to the application itself. And I know that Evan reviewed with us the findings and conditions as part of this. Does anyone have any questions about that? He did that as part of the public hearing. If no one does and has no comments on the draft recommendation, if someone will make a motion to approve the application by adopting the findings and conditions in the staff reports presently displayed in front of us.
Fred Russo, so moved.
Fred makes a motion to approve the application by adopting the findings and conditions in the staff report. Is there a second?
Second, Marcy.
Second, Marcy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick is in favor.
Fred?
Fred Russo in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
I'm in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And Chair is also in favor. Okay. I don't know where Harry is coming. We can move on to new business if he's not ready. Harry, how you doing?
Just about have something worked out. Let me run it by you and see what you think, and maybe we can tweak it around here. So I'm going to share my screen. Hopefully everyone can see this. This is the motion to approve as the application stands. So again, the findings, these two were in the original staff report that was sent to the commission last last night. So we've got, I think I've covered this, the lighting, so the rule of the frag mighties. We covered all of this. So getting down to things that need to be done before certificate zoning appliance or zoning authorization for CO is given, a police roll site work, inappropriate bond, modifying one of the sheets of the plans about the new wall sconce. And then I provided, started writing a C here, which would say the plan shall be amended to modify the slope extending from the north side of the building to provide a horizontal element in parentheses, low retaining wall and selective plantings with a defined structure that could be non-natives if needed to the satisfaction of town planner as he may be advised by, and I was putting you, design professionals of the commission or just advised by design professionals. I can seek out whoever, including probably Marcy and Joe would be my first go-tos. What do you think of that?
Marcy and Joe, you guys.
I'm happy to have something included.
Okay, do you think that does the bill? That handles it?
Well, yeah, I like that it's a little open-ended and hopefully the, hopefully the builder will run with it.
Should we be, should we be saying maybe non-natives as opposed to could be non-natives since it's a matter of permission?
Oh, sure.
Also, maybe taking away that wall situation, just maybe a wall if necessary or something like that. So it's not, they're not obligated to those little walls.
How about the indoor?
I like what Marcy's saying about all, about that restriction of, of native plants, because there are some nice stuff out there that's much better in, in this particular situation. But that's, that's being worked out.
So are we comfortable? I, I mean, it's one, one thing, that's interesting. How does that affect our, would our new regulations allow non-natives in this situation? Had we adopted that regulation, would we be violationally?
No, no, they would. They would. They provide, I think it's thirty percent of the plants can be non-natives in the current draft, as far as I recall. So this would match the spirit of that and the requirements, I believe. I don't know how much of the vegetation would need to be adjusted, but that would, it's kind of what the, you know, what Mr. Appleton comes up with.
Great. Okay, does anyone else have any question? Are we good with this additional condition? It's a number C for, which was it, seven C, which one?
Six C.
Six C. Okay. Okay, and we have, you sent us the draft motion, so we have it in front of us, and you also reviewed it in the public hearing. And the addition that you just made is the six C that we just discussed.
Right, right. The only one, the ones in blue you did not see last night, so that's the one about the light here. And I think it's finding three also about the light. So that's what I added today.
Yeah, yeah. Chuck Anderson, yes, I think you, you pointed those out to us. Okay. If that looks okay with everyone, does someone want to make a motion to approve the application by adopting the staff recommendation as amended with the blue language as well for the, in, in accordance with the staff report for their, our, our July twenty-seventh meeting again, which is obviously the first recommendation that we approval in, in that report.
Chadwick will make that motion.
Motion made by Joe Chadwick. Is there a second?
Marcy, you'll second?
Second by Marcy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred?
Fred Russo in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
I'm in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And Chair is also in favor. Thank you, Harry.
Thank you.
So that brings us into new business. This is a referral from the zoning board of appeals regarding a variance application for twenty-three dash seven dash four to Ferry Lane and thirty-one Spring Cove Road. I will, I will give my understanding of this, and Harry and Evan should jump in. Back in January, I believe, of this year, this, this concerned a, a, a property on Ferry Lane, Spring Cove Road, as you head down towards Lenny's, I think, right? Off of, is it Indian Nekomonowes? Yeah. In any event, there was, there was some, some land where the question was, does the non-conforming lot provision of our regulations apply? There was a very small piece under four thousand square feet that had been, you know, owned by the same owner but taxed separately than the rest of the, of the parcel. And what the attorney came in and said, they wanted to do a lot line revision and to get basically two building lots out of that situation. They had one clear building lot and one little piece. And wanted, wanted an opinion as to whether the, the the lot regulations, the lot side, the regulations applied, the provision we have in the regulations that allow you to comply with the, the non-conforming lot regulations. So if the lot, it's, if it's in our fifteen zone, if you comply with R six, you can meet with the R sixteen. So they wanted to change the dimensions of the parcels so that they would be able to get two lots instead of one. We advised, or we had a discussion about it in January, and my understanding, when I looked at it, my opinion is that did not apply because the definition of lot in many places is described as something as at least four thousand square feet. And this little piece was under four thousand square feet, so that none of the provisions apply. That said, I think we kind of left it open, like if you provide additional information, you want to come back, you know, we'll take another look at it, but that never happened. And then next thing I know, next thing that happened is the applicant's filed a variance application that is presently before the zoning board of appeals. My understanding is that Evan has the lucky, lucky task of attending ZBA meetings. In his due diligence, he said, hey, look, this was before planning zoning, and you were unclear whether we were done commenting on that. And, and so, so you said you should refer to the planning zoning commission for any additional comments. So I think, is that correct, Evan and Harry, that, that it kind of was the thought? So the ZBA said, okay, we'll send it back to them. But the answer to that is that there have been no additional comments. There isn't anything else. We gave it a, you know, an informal consensus. I don't think we took any motions that we didn't think the undersized lot provision applied, and they've gone ahead and applied for variance application. So, so there's not any thing that we need to do about this. So we, we don't, there is an application for the ZBA. There are certain times, certain applications for use variances where the planning zoning commission, under our regulations, is required, you know, they, they shall send it to us for comments. This is not a use variance. So I don't think we need to do anything with this. But, so anyway, that's my long-winded understanding as to what's going on with this. Harry and Evan, can you, you know, supplement or correct me?
Harry, so the town planner, I, I think you've nailed it exactly. That's my understanding of it, my recollection of what happened in January. So we did review the minutes, which we had not done before, I think, the last meeting, and the recording of the meeting in January, just to refresh our collective memory of, of everything you just spoke about. And so I will take this up personally. I was sort of the source of this because I was not sure it was dead-ended in January, but I believe it was absent some additional information coming back. So that was just an open-ended invitation, as you mentioned. So there is no process, as you mentioned, again, for the commission to comment on this, and frankly, the whole question of whether variance is granted or not is entirely within the purview of the zoning board of appeals and, and not planning and zoning commission. So I guess that's all I probably more than needed to mention.
Great. So thanks, Harry. So that means this is moot. We don't need to do anything for this item.
Right, right.
Evan, is there anything else you you want to comment or add?
Uh, no, I think you guys covered everything. Uh, I do just want to mention that there will be a public hearing held by the zoning board of appeals where the public will be able to speak on this application, uh, and that will be in person at the firehouse uh, August fifteenth at seven P M.
Hey, can I ask you a question? Um, I'm just, I'm just not remembering the part of the discussion about us making a decision on the underutilized lot. I remember the presentation and I'm just trying to remember from an miracle standpoint, whether the split would create two conforming lots in a smaller zone and then be you know, historically, do we know whether that was at one point predating zoning intended to be another lot? Because I think that that does change the consideration and would match the purpose of the underutilized lot dimension and I, you know, I know it's a Z B A question, but personally, you know, I wouldn't want to see the owner penalized for owning, you know, abutting parcels. So I I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about that precedence, but you know, I I'm not sure who the owner is and you know, where that all stands. And obviously the Z B A would need to make reference with the variance, but um I I just I personally don't remember the part about us saying it didn't comply with the underutilized lot. I just remember the presentation.
My my recollection, Marcy, as to what we said is is that I said, you know, I I don't have anyone else said, because I had looked at it. I looked at the regulations. I looked at the definition of lot. And many places it says that if it's less than four thousand square feet, it's not a building lot. Uh, and in in that provision for pre-existing lots doesn't comply. So um, I don't know if anyone else said anything frankly, because sometimes you throw these legal questions at you. And I think the applicant said, okay, well, we may give additional information, so we kind of left it open, but they never submitted. And the next thing that happened is that uh, they submitted a variance application, which is fine. I mean, they
I don't remember the size of the lot, so I just feel like I'm and I I apologize for not remembering what you said. I do listen to what you say. Your legal counsel. You know, I I was just concerned because I my sense is that, you know, it's such a beachy area that these things did predate zoning and you know, and I do think that's a a consideration, may not be a legal one, but I think it's just a consideration, so.
Sure, yeah. And then the Z B A will get to address all that stuff, so.
I I I'm just kind of baffled at how they could make application for a variance based on a putative lot line arrangement using the argument that the underlying watts predated zoning. But the 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 nature of a lot has time value to it. And they're they're basically looking for a future benefit uh, based on a past condition. In other words, the zoning variance will be based on a drawing which is not recorded. In order for a lot to be a lot, it needs to be, you know, lawfully dimensioned and recorded. What the variance is based on is not something that's recorded. I mean, there are lot lines that are going to be expunged and, you know, future stuff that just I I I I I just hocus pocus as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I I assume what they would do is they want to get a variance of a bunch of regulations. They would then adjust the lot line and then they would get two lots where now there's essentially one.
Right, but if you adjust the lot lines, you're basing it on, it's 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 a fresh lot. It's 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 a today lot and not a pre nineteen fifty lot.
Right, yeah, it would be create a building lot where now it's not a building lot. It's it's just a thousand square feet of, it's a driveway, I think, essentially. So, in any event, that's, Z B A gets to play with that stuff. So, and if anyone's interested, any member of the commission, come and speak to them if you want to.
I don't think we're allowed to do that.
Yeah, we're not allowed to speak at Z B A or even show up when that moment.
I I think you, you, I think yours, any citizen can talk. I mean, whether you're, I I don't, I mean.
I've sat, I've gone to meetings on other applications and I get a stern look like, why are you here? I know you're on planning and zoning. I'm like, I'm not going to say anything. I'm just here to listen and, you know.
To me, I I mean, just we're all speaking hypotheticals. Um, uh, I think that uh, certain applications must be referred to us. Like if it's a use variance, so we have to, the regulations say, but other than that, I think that it's, I I was way back when, I I remember once attending or went with Shirley Rasmussen to a meeting of a zone. I don't know if it was a use variance or not. And I don't know if we even had that in the recs, but you know, there was something that was pretty outrageous that the town planner felt strongly about and I I agreed with her at the time. And she uh, gave a, you know, expressed opposition. And I don't think that's a problem. I I mean, the the argument would be, oh, you're prejudicing or, you know, under that theory, no town agency could speak to another town agency. So we shouldn't let Mr. Maruska speak because he's associated with the town of Branford. You know, I I think, you know, you you apply your law, you do it and, you know, from whatever source. And the fact that you serve on a commission doesn't necessarily mean you're, you you have to you you have to be silenced before everything else. So, anyway. Hypothetical stuff here, so.
Can we tell the Z B A that?
Hi, I'm from planning and zoning. Can I help?
Yeah, yeah, I I don't intend to uh appear before this thing. They they have a so anyway, so and then the the bottom line for for this is that we should, we we don't need it and and there's no reason to feed an argument. If someone is looking, if there's going to be an appeal, there someone's going to grab anything and say, aha, planning zoning commission had undue prejudice by commenting. That's, so it's wise, I guess, would say by to to say nothing, I guess. But I, you know, I get that from a prudential point of view. That said, if you press me on it, I'd say, no, it's not illegal, so.
Can't say nothing wrong if you don't say anything.
Right. True. So I think that's it for our agenda then.
Yep, that is. And uh, thank you for having all the coaches for having a special meeting. Um, and um that is it for our summer. I hope everyone enjoys the rest of their summer and see you in September, as they say.
Okay, well then, does uh, uh, someone make a motion to adjourn?
Ben Russo makes that motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Craig. Is there a second?
Marcy will second.
Second, Marcy. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred?
Ben Russo's in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Oh, in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And Chair is also in favor. Good night, everyone. We're adjourned.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Have a great summer.